Okay, I'd like to welcome everybody to the March 1 School Board meeting. Call the Public Section to Order. Would you join me, please, in a pledge of allegiance? A pledge of allegiance.
The flag of the United States of America and to the public for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, before we begin with the rest of the agenda, I want to take a moment to thank two of our board members. This will be the last meeting for Laurel McKenzie and Heidi Graff. Laurel has been with us for two terms. She's been most instrumental in improving our facilities and during our budget discussions. Heidi has been with us for three years and has revamped and re-energized our wellness program. I want to thank Laurel and Heidi for their dedication, their ingenuity, and their passion for improving our children's education. Well done, and we'll miss you. Thank you, Heidi and Laurel. Are there any changes to the agenda? Okay, with that, Nick, we'll go into public comments, the first section. I'll give people the instructions as to how to get their comments.
Yeah, of course. So, typical public comment session, the way to join, be able to voice your, whatever your comment may be, is to use that hand raised feature at the bottom of your screen. We'll be able to recognize you there. Then if you could just please, first name, last name, town of residence.
I don't see any hands raised. Okay, so let's go on to the superintendent's report.
Yeah, well, thank you. So, last week, we were non-session, and this week, we are. And so, it's good to be back, but it was also good, I think, for everyone to have some time, some downtime. Some COVID-19-related update. Basically, I think we know that the governor has made an executive order, that was at March 8th, that every school in the state of New Hampshire is to be ending that person at least two days. We're fine there, we qualify. There are some other conversations down the road, not necessarily right now, that we will want to at least embark upon about whether or not we follow some of the CDC recommendations about kind of a staggered approach to getting back into person five days a week. But if we were to do that, it would certainly be a conversation starting with the elementary school. That conversation has not started yet, but I do know that from talking with my colleagues across other districts in this region and some from other parts of the state, that that conversation is happening, at least within the kindergarten, first, second grade levels. So, something to consider down the road. The architect update, I wasn't going to put a side-by-side comparison this time around, because really, the change was that they gave us some preliminaries on bathrooms. So, they will be, there was an individual from Turner who is coming on Wednesday. I have sent out to the administration the pictures, the mapping, basically, of these bathrooms, and to get feedback from them. And along with looking at the front end of this area and a couple other areas within this school, we're going to start talking bathrooms as well, so that we can get that moving along a little bit faster. We certainly had a goal as a board and administration to make sure that our bathrooms were promoted inclusivity and also safety and privacy for all individuals.
And pride.
And definitely pride. We want them to definitely be nice, clean, and well-functioning. Long-range planning. Last week, the administration of the schools went out for a couple of days to do more long-range planning, having to do with the five-year, very specific planning, strategic design, strategic planning that is based upon a strategic design. So, that work is ongoing. We are now going to start to, we're at a place where we can start to fold in other portions of the district, like the central office, the business office, safety and wellness, and so to put those into the document at the exact same time right now. I got off the phone, well, phone and Zoom today with a couple individuals who are going to work with the building-level leaders, myself, some other people from the SAU, to make certain that we are planning our change process well over the years. And so, there will be a lot of support from Dr. Peggy Wozniak. She currently is over at Keene State. She works with our leadership cohorts. And Mr. Rick Anaselli, who is a long-term sub here in administration, but also longtime educator in the state of New Hampshire and in Maine. Both work for a local university and are here to have built good relationships with our administrators and have a wealth of experience. And I think having their outside support paid through Title II funds for our administrators will be good, so that it's not just everything's just relying upon us trying to figure out how the best approach is. There can be good-sounding boards. We'll base, you know, they'll be bringing in literature from, and examples from other areas to help us along the way over the next several years. So, that is good. Other things that have happened or that are happening. We've had conversations about developing the calendar. Every year around this timeframe, we go and meet with CONVAL and Masina. We have a relationship with them due to the ATC programs. We try to align our calendars as much as we possibly can. I believe CONVAL is looking at their calendar tonight. Typically, they're the ones, because they house the ATC program, they go and pass theirs first. We have a process here that we have to adhere to. So, that calendar has been sent to the Teachers Association president, and they will probably have an internal process themselves to talk about the calendar, the proposals, get back to us, and we'll see if there's anything that we can do to, if we need to make some movement or not. And then we will bring that to the board. The goal is to bring the calendar, the proposed calendar, to the board at the next school board meeting. Professional development is, we have a professional development day on the same day that we are voting. That's next Tuesday. One of the items that we will have during that professional development is Juan's Law this year, but it's also extremely important that we make sure that on all educators, bus drivers, cafeteria workers, anyone who is involved with learners, so even people here, actually, although we have some time, we don't have to do it in March, are provided professional development in the area of suicide prevention. So, we have located the, what we think is the best tool for that, and it differentiates itself between elementary learners a little bit and middle school, high school learners. So that it's not, or I should say, so that it is relevant to our educators. Other items that have to do with voting, that's like for next Tuesday, is that we have just received and passed out to various locations the district's annual reports. Voter guides are going to be sent out by tomorrow. They may have been sent out already, but I believe they'll go out in the mail tomorrow with the latest. Ballots have come in. We actually were a little concerned for a while, because we got reports that the people making the ballots were, everything was on back order due to the pandemic and due to also the problems that were in Texas. Am I correct on that one, Nick?
Yeah.
It was Texas because of the recent situations that they've had down there. So, nevertheless, we did receive the ballots. We're in good shape there. I think we are still waiting for one item. I'm not entirely sure about this, but the latest information I had was that little carts that go into the machines, is that something we're still waiting on, Nick?
I have to confirm. There was an email sent out by our company that said that delays could be expected, and I'm waiting to hear back if ours have in fact been delivered or not. So, as soon as I have confirmation on that, we can work with them, because they said that there could be ways, they could expedite shipping to try to get them to us in time.
That's LIHS, Nick?
Yep.
They seem to be very confident that we'll have them ready to go to test the machines and so forth.
Yep.
Very good. And then lastly, last week, we had Jaffrey candidate night. So, there are three individuals who spoke during that timeframe who are on the ballot for school board. So, one of those individuals will likely be in one of these seats next time we're here, on the 15th. And then tonight, actually, right now, so if there's anyone watching and saying, "Hey, I'd really like to switch channels," the Ringe candidate night is going, I believe, simultaneously to this, and you can go get the link off of their town of Ringe website, I believe it is. So, there are two, there's no one who's on the ballot, but I believe there are at least two, maybe three people who are there for write-ins. So, there should be someone who will be elected for that role as well to fill Heidi's position over there, so.
I did query Linda Hunt of the Ringe Chamber of Commerce. She said they were going to try to record that. So, and then I would send the recording to the town of Ringe, so that if they were able to successfully record it, it will be available at the town of Ringe website.
Right. And that's what I have for now, for our report.
Does anyone have any questions for Ruben?
How can we get a copy of the annual report? Do we have to wait till voting day, or?
All right, so we, I dropped off copies in each town's post office, each town's town office, and each town's library. Depending on whether you live in Jaffrey or Ringe, you may have to set up an appointment to actually go into one of those locations. I believe it's just the Jaffrey Town Office and the Jaffrey Library. We have copies at the SAU. We have copies at each school, the main office. And we also have copies that have been set aside for voting day. And obviously, if we don't use all of those, we can distribute those as well. I'm also, hopefully by tomorrow, should have a digital PDF version of the annual report to put on the website.
Great.
We have all of the, like, information on the inside, but Sabron actually generates the cover page and the back page for us. So, I'm just waiting for that copy before I place it online, so.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions? Okay, consent agenda. Do we have any changes to the consent agenda?
I have a change. I'd like to add the renewal of the superintendent's contract to the consent agenda.
Okay. Ready?
Second.
So, we have a motion to add the superintendent's contract renewal to the consent agenda. The motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained. Motion carries 600. Okay, is there anything that people want to pull out of the consent agenda?
I move we accept the consent agenda as amended.
Do we have a motion?
Heidi, second.
Okay, the motion is second to approve the consent agenda as amended. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained. Motion carries 600. Okay, bid or work, paying the bid. Are you comfortable with Ruben?
I can certainly speak to it, yeah. I mean, John has written it up nicely here, and we're proposing to go with the low bidder in this case. He and John, sorry, Todd Kroto, have been working to check references on this company, as it was a company that we weren't as, you know, it wasn't as familiar to us. References have come back good. There's, we don't see a reason why to go into another direction. I will say that since I've been here, this is the most successful bidding process that we've had. I want to applaud the facilities committee for really making sure that we're pushing to get this done in a appropriate time. Even then, it was not easy to do so. Two, from the support from Todd Kroto, from his recent addition to the town of Jaffrey and the superintendent of the highways and so forth. He's had a lot of experience with this. He was able to help us with formatting and with some documents. Certainly, John Leclerc, the facilities manager, and Carrie had done some work on this as well. And by putting this out, getting, we had, as you can see, several individuals coming that were interested in this project. And we're just very excited that, well, you know, we're very excited to have the competitive bidding, first and foremost, but secondly, it's really nice to have competitive bidding from more than two or three, but to have legitimately, you know, seven, I believe it is, different groups. So, all of them asked great questions. I was not part of the majority of the process. I saw them, but John indicated that there were, you know, there were a lot of great questions, and we had to go back and refine some things and get some answers for them. So, it was just a very good process.
Can I say something?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, so this scope of work is to remove the existing asphalt pavement at this campus and at RMS and replace it. That just makes sense. Rather than trying to reclaim what's here and cover it, same thing at RMS. We're going to remove the asphalt, fluff up the subgrade that's there, compact it appropriately, and then asphalt pavement. We will not be doing asphalt paving work at Jaffrey Grade School. Yes. Award.
Okay, anybody have any questions?
Just that Carrie asked me to specifically have some wording, if you were to go forward and make a motion to award the bid to whomever, and then contingent upon being able to successfully enter into a contract and to authorize the superintendent to execute the contract. So, in this case, it would be a motion to award the bid to United Construction Corporation, contingent upon being able to successfully enter into this contract, and if successfully entered into it, to authorize the superintendent to execute the contract.
And the contract not to exceed? So, would you like a motion?
Charlie had a question.
Go ahead. Should the motion include not to exceed?
I know that there are already changes in scope anticipated.
Okay.
There are some deducks and some adds.
Okay. So, you're going to make a motion, John?
Well, yes, I would move that we award the contract to United Construction, providing that we're able to enter into that contract based on the requirements being fulfilled and that the superintendent be given the authority to enter to that contract with United Construction.
Okay, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second, motion made by John, seconded by Heidi. Is there any further discussion?
I have one claim of discussion. There has been some talk about hiring a testing entity clerk of the works for this project, and I strongly urge the district to do that, to make sure that the work is completed as we specify.
And we have been provided a recommendation and relative costing, the cost for that, which is, looks reasonable. It's well below any sort of meeting a bid threshold.
So, is there something that you can provide us with, the meeting after?
Yeah, next meeting, I'll talk about any progress we've made with that. But I agree that these are, this is a fairly significant project. And we've been, in one form or another, we've been trying to do these things over the last several years. And so, to get these right, to not mess them up, and to make sure the drainage is proper and make sure that the quality is good, it's important that we have someone who knows what they're doing look it over. None of us are experts in bidding.
Any other discussion? Okay, we have a motion, a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained. Motion carries 600. Okay, next, we have action items, reopening framework?
So, the reopening framework, these are just some additions after our nurses looked over. Again, what we put down was fun, and it's straight out of New Hampshire DPHS, but they pointed to some other documents as well. Nick, you've been in communication with them more recently as of today.
So, essentially, what happened was we, there's multiple documents that New Hampshire DPHS releases, obviously, and when we made the first change, we were looking at one document that had the recommendations that were appropriate based on what we had put down. There's another document out there that explains some of the other things that we've added. So, rather than them all being in one place, there were multiple places and multiple documents. What we did is we kind of consulted the nurses again. We've looked at, you know, a couple more documents and just kind of revamped that language that we approved at the last, I think it was the last meeting or maybe the meeting before. So, this is just a little bit more comprehensive and just speaks to a couple other situations. I guess, exceptions to the exception, if you will.
Yeah, so they can have a vaccine, but the vaccine may not work for them. So, they still could get COVID. And so, if they're having symptoms, that's a different situation. We have to follow the protocols if they're symptomatic.
Good, so the most current language is what we have on the website? Any agenda?
Yeah, this, this, so the, once you look at quarantine testing exceptions, everything that's in black is what we approved at the last meeting. Everything is red is the addition to that language that we approved at the prior meeting.
Well, it's certainly good to see these clarifications that obviously make good common sense, so. I have to thank the nurses for picking up on this.
Yeah, no, well, thank the nurses for this, and I should have mentioned it. I had it written down up here in my report to let you know that I've been in conversations with the nurses all last week. You know, they're on school vacation and yet they're working still to make sure not, not dealing with cases that are necessarily work in our school or anything, but cases that are occurring within the community with maybe some students and so forth. So, they're talking with families and helping them and making sure that they're getting the support they need and making sure that they're staying out and not coming in. So, they're really working overtime to make sure that everyone's safe in both communities.
Kudos to them.
Yeah, you're on an outstanding job.
Okay, so do we need to take action on this?
Oh, yeah, you would need to approve this, because this would be a change to the framework.
That we wanted to add the red.
You'd be adding everything in red to our framework. Everything that's in black is a part of it. You'd be adding the red.
I make a motion that we approve the changes as noted in red on the new framework, quarantine testing exceptions.
The motion for Patty?
I'll second.
Laurel, second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained. Motion carries 600. Okay, policy review, this is the second reading for these two policies. Is, are there any discussion about policies?
Yes. Okay, so on the policy review for policy BDH, actually for both policies, what the changes that I would like to ask about are, in policy BDH, it's listed as number two, that, and this is the section in red, "Public content is reserved for district residents and parents and guardians of district students." I believe the same language is in the other policy as well. So, my question is, does this mean that teachers and administrators, principals, and staff members who do not live in the district cannot comment during public commentary?
The answer to that from the policy committee, and we had a long discussion about this, is that as a school board, we're accountable to residents, and we're accountable to parents and guardians, and we're very interested in their thoughts about the direction of our school system. If we have a non-resident who is a staff member, regardless of whether they're a teacher or not, they're a staff member, they have other avenues for bringing issues forward, okay? And we felt that the place for staff members to bring issues forward was not in public comment for the school board, but rather in the processes that are available to them within the district itself.
What would those processes be, Charlie? Could you just go over those for us?
Okay, it's for general discussion. They have administrative, okay? And for complaints, we have a policy that allows them to go through a process, which is fair to all parties. So, we're not dealing with anecdotal, unsubstantiated, or third-party accusations, okay? And if you're a teacher, you have two avenues. If you have a complaint, you can use a K process, or if you are a teacher, you can also use a grievance process. Both of those processes, by the way, could end up in a hearing before the board. So, the board should not be discussing those unless they've gone through the entire process.
So, thank you for the effort. I'm still not exactly sure, though. If a staff member, whether a principal or a teacher, would like to share, perhaps not a complaint, but provide input to the board, the way for doing that is to, through the grievance? Well, could you just explain again?
No, 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 if you want to share something with the board, you're a staff member and employee, you can share it, people, share it with the board through the administrators, through the superintendent, okay? If you have a complaint, there's a process, a specific process to follow. If you have agreements, there's a specific process to follow. So, there are several ways, as a staff member, if you want to get information to the board, to do that, but you need to follow a process. The shortcut is not directly to the board without knowing ahead of time what that particular issue is. When we open up public comments, what we're doing is we're opening the ability for people to voice their opinions and without any kind of knowledge ahead of time in terms of what the subject matter is going to be. If the subject matter is something that could potentially come before the board in the form of a hearing, then the board will already be biased, or has a potential for being biased. So, what we would like to do is offer the opportunity for staff members who are not residents and who are not parents, okay, to use the processes available to them. For our public comment from the board is concerned, we're concerned about the effect of the board on our community and specifically on our residents and the parents of our, parents and guardians of our students.
All right, so I'm still, I'm hearing you speak to complaints and grievances in a way that, you know, I can kind of understand. However, we're just after modifying our framework, because we neglected to put some information in there, kind of common sense information, I think, that even if someone's been vaccinated, if they end up sick with COVID, they should still quarantine, right? That's kind of common sense. But we missed it in our previous discussion. Now, it's been corrected, thanks to the input from our nurses. But if our nurses don't live in the district, they couldn't tell us that. They could tell us that after the fact.
That's exactly what happened, but they don't need to tell us. That's exactly how we got this. That's exactly how we got this.
Or, I, I guess, I'm just trying to understand why we're trying to control the flow of information. I, I have to say-
I think there's a difference between controlling the flow of information, okay, and controlling the content of the comments directly to the board. I think that's what we're trying to do, okay? We're trying to say, we're very interested, if you read the opening of the policy, okay, what the policy says is the board encourages citizens of the district to attend its sessions so that they may become better acquainted with the operation and program of the schools, and so that the board may have the opportunity to hear the wishes and ideas of the public. So that's our goal, is to encourage the citizens of the district, which includes residents, it includes specifically the parents of our students. So we want to get the feedback back from them, all right? That's all we're saying.
Well, so what you're saying is you would like to get feedback from parents and residents, but not from staff members who are non-residents?
Non-residents. We have accountability to our residents. We're elected by and accountable to them.
Yes, we certainly do.
Okay.
So I guess we're just differing over what's the, what's an adequate procedure for open communication and for fulfilling that responsibility that you're alluding to?
That's correct. From my perspective, so, you know, just, again, public discussion, it seems to me that much of the discussion has gone on under this extraordinarily difficult year, where we've felt the need to bring people back, our staff members back in person, and we've done that and successfully, but not without some challenges. And where a lot of input has been provided during the public participation process, I don't recall any of it having been acrimonious or disrespectful, at least not coming from staff members. And yet this seems like a move to make sure that that kind of input doesn't happen in the future. Am I misinterpreting? I think you are. What we're saying is that there is a forum for residents to provide comments to the board. There is a forum for parents to provide comments to the board. There is a forum for non-residents who also haven't been staff members, okay, to provide comments and information.
Okay, well, thank you for the-
It's like the nurses tonight, all right? The nurses provide the information, we may change it based on their information. And we provided, you know, at least either, that's up to the big job. But that doesn't necessarily mean that, that what they should do during a public comment subse- section is, is raise the issue about the accuracy or inaccuracy of the reopening framework. I think there's an opportunity to do that within the constructs of the school district organization.
Okay, great. Well, thank you for the opportunity to understand a little bit more about the motivation for this and, and your explanation of it.
Is there, did we have a motion?
No. We did not have a motion.
We did not have a motion. Okay, so do we have a motion?
I make a motion that we accept policy B E D H, public participation for meetings, with the changes noted, I don't know, colored that, red. As a member of the policy committee, I-
So, did you do both? I'm sorry, did you do both or just one?
I, I can do both and policy K E, but I hope to the end. Public concerns and complaints, with the changes with the square counts and red.
Okay, I have a motion.
I'll second.
I have a second from Laurel. Any discussion? All of them favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Opposed.
All of us abstained? Motion period five, one, zero. Okay, board committee updates. Do you have any updates from the facilities committee?
We heard a little bit from Ruben. I could add a couple things. One is that we expect the, one of the scope of, this is the scope of work that the architect is working on, is an assessment of our masonry facades in all of our school buildings, some of which are looking a little less than fabulous. We were expecting that report this week, which will let us do some planning. And we also learned that the emergency generator at the middle school seems to power the entire middle school with the exception of the bridge that was built into 2008, which is, doesn't it? Which is pretty-
Two thousand and six or two thousand and eight, one of those was, one of those even number of years.
Which is pretty surprising that it actually powers pretty much the entire school except for those four classrooms, right? And then also that Ruben and facilities manager, John McClure, are going to be working with the architect to accelerate their schedule so that we get done well before July.
Good.
Did I miss anything?
Thank you, Laurel. Policy committee?
Yep, policy was last Thursday. We had a presentation from our board member, Amy Graff, about policy J L C F, which is a wellness policy, and we had some discussion around that policy, and I'm looking forward to the recommended J L C F coming in the next few weeks with the committee will review and then pass along to the board. Very exciting policy with a lot of necessary updates that will also help to streamline future work.
Thank you, Lisa. Any questions for the policy committee?
Thank you for your work.
Wellness?
Nothing new to report. We are meeting next Monday. I think I will stay on the wellness committee through the school year, so nothing new, just working still on the trail project, and we'll keep working on this policy to get that to you as soon as possible.
Thank you, Heidi, and thank you for your hard work on wellness. Okay, all right, that brings us to public comments, too.
Do you want to talk about finance committee? We just met. You might as well, you might as well tweet your word a little bit.
Okay, let's hear about the finance committee.
Okay, the finance committee did meet last week, and it looks like there will be a surplus this year, after all spending that we could dream up. No, that's not, that's not a responsible way to phrase it.
That was a joke.
After adding in some items that we know are not currently encumbered but will be expended this fiscal year, it looks like there will be a million dollar surplus, at least, from which, that's in excess of the warrant articles, correct?
We should be able to fund the warrant articles and have between 750 and 1 million.
Right.
It's, there's some other things that the board will want to consider about buyouts and things of that nature, that's-
Right.
Okay, thank you, Laurel.
That's, I think those are safe. We looked, and we looked at those numbers, and I think that they're as far as safe.
Okay, now we can go on to public comments, too.
All right, so just to refresh, you know, please first and last name use the, and raise feature in the counter resident space.
I don't see any hands next to you. Any comments? Okay. Do we have any board matters?
Charlie, can I just make a comment? I would just like to express my appreciation to all my fellow board members. I enjoyed working with all of you very much. And also, Ruben, I know you've mentioned the nurses and how much they're working overtime, and, you know, I think everyone in this district has just done a phenomenal job, as challenging and as, you know, heart wrenching this, as this year has been. I think everyone has really stepped up, so I would just like it on record to let everyone know, in the district, every, every person working here, that I appreciate all the wonderful effort that they put forth, and they all deserve an enormous pat on the back, which they could all get a nice bonus, but, that's how the school works. But I really just want that to be known, that I appreciate it, and I appreciate all of you. Thank you.
Thank you, Heidi.
Thank you, Heidi.
And I would echo everything Heidi just said, because I was about to go, ah.
I beat you, sorry.
But it has been an honor to serve with this board and the members that preceded you. A huge growing experience, and thank you all for your work and service. And thank you to the district, and I agree that everyone here, everyone working in these buildings or not in these buildings this year deserves a huge animal, enormous.
Thank you, Laurel, I think we all agree with that.
Yeah, you know, since we did get through our agenda pretty quickly, I'll just take a moment, we've already talked about this a little bit before we came in here, but I, I think we're all very grateful to Heidi and to Laurel for the work they've done. Heidi, I haven't had the pleasure of working with you on committees, but I've seen your dedication and how you've struggled with challenging issues and done it with, you know, your whole heart and with great honesty. And Laurel, I have had the chance to work with you on several committees and undersawed by your dedication and the effort you've put in and the contributions you made.
Thank you.
And I think just to put a note out there, because Heidi kind of slipped it in, that she's going to continue on the wellness committee throughout the rest of the year, and Laurel's going to continue on with some facilities committee work for the rest of the year, if not longer, and also the contributions with the, as we're trying to get robotics and so forth stepped up, so just the dedication. One thing, with everyone here, this, this board is extremely dedicated to these communities, to our kids, to our faculty and staff, but I want to focus on our kids, really, that's what we're all here for. And so, hey, we're off the board, and you know what? We'll continue to do the work. That's, that's dedication, so, thank you.
Thank you, Ruben. Okay, future item, do you have an update on technology plan?
Yeah, we're going to be putting that, yeah, we're going to be putting that, that work right into the overarching document. So there might, there might be a separate plan to implement, will be put in there as well.
All right, that brings up the last item. Do I have a motion? Heidi?
I have a motion to adjourn.
Do we have a simple one?
I'll second that.
Thank you, everybody. You understand adjourn?